I was supposed to tell all of the committee people, please use your microphones at all times today. Don't do as I do, do as I say do. Because Nancy, Nancy is gonna be from the, from the audio is going to do the minutes. So that, and Mike's really happy about that, so. So, so anyway, make sure you use your, your audio today, but anyway, we will call the meeting to order.
Silence your phones.
Pardon? I did, yeah.
No, you're supposed to make the announcement.
Oh, please. Hey, it's been a month for gosh's sake.
Dude, I've done all the county meetings and they have a, they have a script that they read and that's number one.
Make sure, make sure your phones are all on silent. We don't wanna hear any, anything going on. And we're, we've got, making an announcement that we've got two of our, two of our members that are missing this morning. Steve is not present and John Gardner is not present. Steve had a, had a flight that he had to make to London and John had some surgery and he's recovering from, but he's doing fine. Our, our main speaker today, Chris Gibson, the engineer with TI Coastal, will also not be here. He was last minute, his wife called the town this morning and notified us that he was ill, some kind of a virus and that he would not be here. So, but we have a lot to do and we're gonna try to get it all done during, during our hour and a half or whatever time we have. And so, thank you for coming. I would ask the, for someone if they would approve the, ask for approval of the agenda for this meeting.
Motion to approve.
Just to approve, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Also, would like to have, ask for an approval of the December fifteenth, I mean, December the fifth minutes that were done and I'd ask for a motion to approve those.
A motion to approve?
Approve, say a second.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. All right, now we're to a public comments section. We, does anyone in the, in, in the, in the public room here have any comments they'd like to make to the board? Okay, thank you, you get another chance at the end, so maybe we'll say something in, maybe we'll say something inspiring and you'll be ready to jump up and add something at the end. But thank you for coming. I'm now going to call on Manager Darian to give us the current status of the shoreline protection projects.
Yes, thank you, good morning everyone, happy new year. The beach projects, the contractor continues to work on the phase five project. The contractor reported that the 421 sand production is slower than normal due to delayed expansion permitting. The contracted volume for the current project is 290,000 cubic yards of sand. This is still the volume that the town expects to receive. The slowed production of beach compatible sand has affected its progress, as I'm sure you're aware from seeing the decrease in the amount of trucks. However, it is the town's expectation that the contractor completes the project by the current environmental permitting window, which ends on April 30th. The crossover at Oyster Lane's been repaired from the recent storms and was reopened on January 9th. It was reopened actually, the day that the last storm, the cold front came through and was expected to hit us and I'm happy to report that it fared well. The town's engineers were asked to complete a survey of beach conditions following, following the most recent storm event. There's some change, but not as bad as the previous one, cuz it did not reach as far as inland, is what they had reported. The board brought up Marina Way at the last Board of Aldermen meeting and I passed on some other hotspot areas to the engineers such as Topsail Dunes. And I've asked them to, to assess those in particular and recommend any action. That concludes my report.
Any questions, comments?
Will we, will we be delayed then in starting phase four due to the issue with phase five?
I, I would expect that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Do you wanna talk about the Vitex grant here or do you wanna wait till later in the agenda? We talk about the coastal storm damage mitigation fund.
Sure. Last, if you recall, last year, I reported on a grant that we were working on for Vitex removal. This is a grant that we are looking at applying for island wide, which means that we, along with Topsail, the town of Topsail and also Surf City, would apply for the same grant to remediate Vitex. I have asked our, TI, TI Coastal to follow up with coastal transplants for an updated estimate for removal for our area in particular. We have budgeted for that, in the event that the grant did not come through this year, we'll probably do the same. I can't speak for next year's budget, but we will likely do the same. If, we usually plan for not receiving a grant, then if we get it, that's, yes, yes. So, that's how we budget for all of our grants that we apply for. But when we talked about Vitex in the past, it does not make sense for one town to just focus on removal because it spreads, it's so invasive and spreads so widely that if, if we did it, it, it would just would not make sense if Surf City and Topsail didn't follow suit because we would just be, we would just keep following the same, the same process and having to retreat and it would keep coming back because it spreads, cuz it, cuz it's so invasive.
Mike, did you wanna just do, and, and I'm sure, I know you've done that at the board meetings, talk about what it does to the beach grasses and stuff and why this is important to get rid of this stuff? Because I've seen it in front of, like, some of the, the townhouses and stuff and people think that it's a grass. And basically, what it does is destroy everything else, correct? It's invasive.
The large areas in front of St. Regis.
That's what I'm thinking about.
Yeah, Vitex is a plant, it's not really a grass. It's a plant that has like a single root system, like a taproot on a pine tree. But instead of growing up like a pine tree, it grows out. And as it grows out, it shades the beach grasses, so they can't get sunlight, so they're shaded out. And yet, when you remove the, the Vitex, you remove that one taproot and then you've got all this area of the dune surface that was covered by the foliage of that spreading out plant. So you've got all this bare ground. And so, if you don't replant with the coastal grasses, the dune grasses, then the Vitex can't re, get reestablished. So it's a, it's a, really a two-phase process, removal and then replanting that dune with the desirable beach grasses because those root systems are fibrous, they spread out and that's what holds the sand together, particularly when we have storms.
That was my point, is that, is that they don't, the root system doesn't maintain the dunes like the grasses do.
Right, it's just a taproot that goes down. Well, and the other question I had for the town manager, have you talked with the other town managers for their two towns? Have you figured out a coordination strategy yet? Who's gonna re, apply for the, the grant with?
Yeah, we'll be, we've been touching base every few months, cuz we've been waiting for the coastal storm damage mitigation fund grants to be announced, which it was, as you know, just announced this month. So, we, we have a meeting later on today, we're unsure, we will touch base on that to determine the timeline forward. So, probably at the next Board of Aldermen meeting, you'll have a timeline.
Did, did I understand you to say earlier, or did I just misunderstand, that all three of you were gonna apply so that if one of you got it?
Yes, that's the intent.
Okay.
Yes.
And I can tell, and, and Mike could speak to this better than me. I think my view as an alderman is that with or without the grant, this is something we need to do. And we've budgeted for it with or without the, if the grant comes in, as Alice said, that's great, we'd love to have the money. But this is important enough to, to stabilizing the dunes, that we do this anyway. Is that fair, Mike?
For sure.
Are the other towns also gonna keep going if they don't have, or are we on our own then?
Well, we'll have to, I, I can't speak for the other two towns, so they're gonna have to wait to see when the announcements are made. I will say, we were the only town that put the money in our budget and was able to move forward if we wanted to. But we decided to go ahead and wait, cuz we were pretty confident that these funds would be released again and that we would have a very good chance for the project basis, especially since it's island wide.
I, I would be shocked with all the work going on in Topsail, I can't speak to Surf City. If, if they didn't, and maybe you've talked to Steve, Mike, but I would be shocked if they don't, they don't do this because they're putting a ton of sand on the beach right now.
And, and this project, dollar wise, will be relatively small. I say that in terms of hundreds of thousands rather than in millions. And the Coastal Storm Dam Damage Mitigation Fund received a $10 million investment from the state legislatures this year and another $10 million for next year. So, there's money in that, in that fund for this kind of, these kind of projects.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Manager Darian. Next I'm gonna call on Mayor Pro Tim and Alderman Mike Benson. That's very official.
I, I just wanted to update the Bisac Committee. The Board of Aldermen passed a revised rules of procedure for committees at, at last board meeting. So, we've changed things around a little bit. And as we talked back in December, there are three members of our Bisac Committee whose terms will end next month. Alderman Grant, John Gardner and Terry Ward. And so, the process under our new guidelines is that if, if committee members want to be considered for reappointment and we, we hope that our present committee members do wanna be considered for reappointment, that they reapply through the town website for reappointment to the committee. And you might have also seen, if you're on the sunshine list, that there was a call put out townwide for people particularly in phase two and three, I think. If you live in those areas, to apply for consideration, cuz we've been trying to have committee members represent the, the five different phases or, as you're gonna learn as this committee progresses, where the engineers really call the different sections of the beach reaches, like you reach down the beach, I guess, rather than phases that we came up with about 10 or 15 years ago. So, we're trying to get people up and down the beach as part of the committee. But we appreciate the standing mem, current standing members and appreciate them reapplying for consideration by the board at its February meeting. They will make reappointments or appointments, whatever the case might be.
If I could just add one, just one, one addition to that is, the way it's set up now is there's no pre-screening process. That every app, everybody that applies for any of the boards in the town, all of the aldermen get those applications. So, there, like, the planning board isn't gonna pre-screen who goes, who gets recommended. Bisac's not gonna do that, because the, the Board of Aldermen is the one making the appointments and we felt that everybody that's a board of, that's an alderman should be looking at all the applications before making a decision on who gets appointed. And that's kinda the reason for it, not to have it pre-screened.
And apparently, there's been a little, a few little changes and so, we wanna make sure that everybody understood the, the process. And, and so, even though, even though our, our two members that terms are expiring ha- have made application and, and would like to stay on the committee, that is something that still goes before the, the board. It's not a, because there have, there have been other application in the process. But we, Bisac, the Bisac Committee has nothing to do technically with, with what the board does in that regard, so. Just wanted to, and, and, you know, Alderman Benson just wanted to make sure that everybody did understand how that process is. Of course, it's, it's, it's our first time of knowing that because we've, you know, we're just, Bisac's not but a few years old. So, anyway, any, any other questions about that? Thank you, Mike. I, I wanna discuss real quickly our 2024 meeting schedule. We have, we, we have been meeting the third Tuesday of every month, except for July, I think that we're, we don't have a meeting. And I, I would, I would propose that we main, I would propose or ask if it's okay if we maintain that, if the, the third Tuesday is still a good day for the meeting, for the, for the members. If, if so, that's what I would like to schedule. We have also had some conversation about whether we're gonna have the need going forward for monthly meetings or whether we could consider bimonthly meetings based on what happens with, with the plans that we're dealing with. What, what I would like to propose is that we go ahead and schedule our meetings through June on, on the third Tuesday. July, we're off, I mean, July, July, July is no meeting. So, so in, in our, in our June meeting, I would propose that we then make a decision on how we want to go forward from there. A, a lot of it's gonna depend on, on where, where the five-year and thirty-year plan are at that point in time. It looks like we're gonna be busy in the short terms because we're very close to getting it in front of the board and, and moving forward. So, I, I would like to propose, anybody wanna make a motion?
Just real quick, I support that and, and even though it's serendipity, we're a fiscal June thirty year as a town, so having a meeting in June makes a lot of sense because the budget will be approved in June. So we'll know as a committee what's in there for the beach plans for next year. So it's, it's, I, I would definitely keep that one, I think it's a great idea, cuz then we'll get more of a feeling, like if there's all this money being budgeted in the town to do this stuff, then we might have to meet more often is the point.
But that, that'll give us the opportunity to make that decision then rather than making it now.
Okay, perfect.
Do I have a motion in that regard?
I'll make a motion to keep the schedules the third Tuesday of every month at 10:30.
Would you do that again with your microphone on?
So sorry.
Only cuz Wendy's gonna, no, sorry, Nancy's gonna do the minutes, right?
I make a motion to keep the Bisac meetings the third Tuesday of every month at 10:30.
Through Tuesday, through June.
Through June. I second.
And a second, we've got a, we've got a motion and a second to any conversation, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries, thank you. So that, that is what we will do. I would now like to call on, on Mike Benson again to discuss the storm damage, Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund opportunity.
Yeah, thank you Chairman. I thought it would be good for us just to discuss some possibilities here. And that's why I asked the town manager earlier about the Vitex, because that may be a island wide grant opportunity. But I'm thinking that we had a pretty severe storm with some dune erosion in certain areas and as Town Manager mentioned in her report, there were a couple areas that might be considered hotspots where the dune really formed a big escarpment from ocean waves during that Tuesday night storm we had last week. So I'm wondering if we might consider, once we get the engineers' report, exactly how much sand was lost, if we might consider using some of our un earmarked funds in Fund Thirty, the beach fund, to possibly apply for a Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund grant just to work on those sections of the dune that was pretty severely damaged in the last storm. But really, until we, until we get the engineers' report from the survey that the Town Manager just mentioned, I think for us, it's just sort of a general discussion and see what you think about it and should we recommend to the board as a resolver meeting that they consider applying for that kind of a grant. So, I'll just kinda leave it open for discussion to see what the, what the group thinks about that.
Terrence.
As a representative from phase one, we have lost considerable sand. I mean, I've been here since 2014 and we have lost all the sand that we got this summer and we are way below what it was in 2014. So, I'm sure the engineer's report is going to talk about how much sand has been lost in that phase and I would highly recommend that we look for ways to re... It, not just refresh, I mean, we need.
Restore the dunes.
Restore the dunes.
Other comments, questions?
I agree, I think that if we have this opportunity, that we should take advantage of it because it's just going to get worse. So if we can kinda stall that, but would that change anything of our five-year or thirty-year plan? That would be my only question.
And we'll discuss that, the next, the next item on the agenda. So, so Mike, are you thinking that we need a, that we need a motion from this committee to?
I don't think so.
To, or just to?
It's too, it's too complicated, cuz you got the litigation with revetment and everything else. I think it's a good thing for us, one is, I think it'd be a really good question to put to Chris, to Terry's point about, one of the things I think he's made clear was is don't do it piecemeal, right? Figure out what you've got, what you can do, what you can't do, right? We also have some stuff up in One that Mitchell's supposed to finish.
Correct.
Right, up there as well, so you've still got some sand going in there. I don't know how that's gonna affect it, but I think that as a town, I know, I'm solely speaking for myself, anytime we can get matching grants, what we've talked about in this committee, what Chris has talked about in this committee is be opportunistic. If money comes, if you look what happened in four, how fast did that happen, right? Anytime we can do something where we're using somebody else's money and get matching stuff, we oughta be taking a look at what's out there. But I think the, the thing that Chris has made clear to us is don't be doing a piecemeal because you're not really gonna, you're, you're not gonna add, you're gonna, you could create more problems by doing it the wrong way. So I would, I would look to him, but I can tell you, I think the consensus, at least from my perspective, is anytime we can get matching funds, anytime we can get money, we've got the other project that Mitchell's supposed to have finished, that hopefully will be done. Then I think that whenever we can find money, we should take advantage of it. And I think that's what Chris has said right all the way through this thing, that you got a thirty-year plan that you know is not gonna happen, right? Cuz in year three, all of a sudden there's more money, now we can do this and this. Or instead of having, instead of doing, you know, phase three and four, I'm sorry, two and three, or, or, I'm sorry. Instead of doing phase two, we find out there's money, so you can do two and three at the same time? Or you can do one, two, one and three, whatever, that's the opportunistic stuff and that's the plan that he's building for us.
Well, let me ask a question relative to that, with the alderman. When we're talking about, because Chris's plan is very dependent on grants. And that being.
Somewhat, yes.
Yes. And that being said, as the Board of Aldermen with the town manager, is somebody, one of the aldermen have that under their?
Purview.
Purview to be looking for grants or is it dependent on the town manager? How are you as a board dealing with the grant situation?
I, I think it's all, all the above, but I would look to her. But keep in mind, a lot of these grants are continuing grants, that, that, they're out there every year. So when he says, "I'm gonna rely on the shallow fund," all right, we, it's been there every year, okay? And so what he's saying is, "I'm not making up that you're going to get this." What I'm saying is, there's, there's this much money that generally comes from the state or the feds to do these type of projects. We are going to apply for those. He's also doing it and saying, "Look, if you know you've got X amount of money to spend," which is one of the reasons, if you think about this, that we've put money away in the beach fund. Especially once we pay off the phase five stuff. We've got that money coming in, with or without grants, we've got money to do things in the beach. The question is, are we doing this or this? With the grants, we're doing this, you know, with the money we've got, well, maybe we're doing this, all right? We're still gonna do something, though, we're not gonna sit and do nothing.
So when will you have the engineers' report?
Where Noah?
I'm not sure what the engineers' report is.
Are you talking about the, from the re- recent storm assessment?
Yeah.
Within the next week, I expect to, to know something.
They have to do a survey after.
They did, they did, they took some pictures. They, they, they taken.
They, they took pictures, they documented, they did come back and say that this recent storm wasn't bad as the last, the previous one because it didn't reach as far inland. But they've been asked to identify certain areas that we're aware of where there's hotspots, like Topsail Dunes, Marina Way. And there are some others that we want to see if their recommendation, and in the past, they haven't recommended that they do, like Rick had said, one-off projects. But I've asked them to go back, relook at it and see if they can. If they can, then the idea would be to hopefully apply for the grants to become available.
So, but they are, they, they have taken quick action as far as determining what problems there are, and so they know.
Anytime we do, anytime there's a service.
So, I think that the.
Anytime there's a storm, there's a survey.
And, and, and it's just like they're talking about, the grant process is ongoing. I mean, you know, we, and, and our, if, if our relationship with TI Coastal continues as it is and if we move forward with this, with our plans, then we've, we've got, we've got their eyes on it too and they're looking because they're, a lot of what they're gonna be able to accomplish during this plan, during the, their, over the, over the years, short and long term, are taking advantage of, of grants that are available. So, you know, the, the ten and a half million dollars that we got last year, you know, Chris was actually the one that said, hey, you know, this thing's out here and then boom, we had to jump on it, cuz we didn't have this much time to make it happen. But, but we did and, and we got that ten and a half million dollar matching grant and were able to use FEMA funds to, to, to match it. So we really had to come up with no new money.
Right, and just, and also keep.
So based on your discussion about the TI and what TI Coastal is doing, I would like to have on the agenda every month a report from our representative about what TI Coastal is doing, committee. Are, are you on the committee? The TI committee?
Are you talking, what, there's two different things here. It's the Topsail Island Shoreline Protection Commission that meets every two months, we'll be meeting January 25th, I think, the next meeting. But TI Coastal's a private engineering firm.
No, I understand that, that's Chris's.
That's Chris.
No, I'm talking about the.
The Shoreline Protection Commission.
Yes, the committee.
I, I am on that and, and, and Mike, Mike is the assistant, what's the, what's the title? He's vice chair, yeah, they got.
Second Grand Poobah.
Yeah, yeah.
Alderman Leonard is the third town representative.
And, and Steve, Steve Smith, the mayor of Topsail, has been for a long time and he, he's been elected for another term and, and, and so has Mike, so they've agreed to, to serve for another year. But yes, I, I, I serve on that committee because of this committee, as does the Topsail Beach person that does the same kinda thing that we have here and, and the Surf City. So, we've got good representation from the, from the town in North Topsail Beach and, and, and Mayor Dorian Goos, and Mr. S. Hall.
Well, I'm just saying, after your meeting, to give us a, a summary, so we know where the plans are.
Well, we try to do the minute, you know, we, we have tried over the past to have Mike, because of being the co-chair and, and doing minutes here for a lot of stuff. He, he has been making reports on that on a fairly regular basis, especially if anything of any magnitude has taken place. I mean, sometimes, sometimes we have a meeting that is, is a meeting and it's, it's a rehash and it's a hash and a rehash. But, you know, but, but anything that, that's new or anything that's come up different, then we'll, we will make sure we do that.
And also, I think, I think Deb, it's real, to me, the most important thing that I think that Chris and his group are gonna do for us is get the permits in place, right? I mean, that's the, to me, that's the key, because talking about being opportunistic, without the stuff that we had from her and from Chris on four, we don't have that money.
That's right.
All right? We don't wanna be out there and somebody says, "Oh my God, there's $10 million in grants there." And we're like, "Okay, it's gonna take us a year to get the permits." That's not a good business model and I think that's what Chris talked about and I can't remember what he said, Larry, but it was like, almost by the end of this year, he feels like we could have all the stuff, the permits in place. And to me, that's the critical element of getting it done.
And, and that, that, that's why I, I see it as an important timing to, to get this plan finalized and approved so that we can really start using the brain power of, of what's there. And, and, and we have a, we have, we have a, what's the word, we have a venue to be able to make that happen because he, we're working in, inside of this plan that's gonna do a lot of what you're talking about.
Let, let me just answer one more. Let, let me just, um, answer one more question that Deb raised, and then we can move on, because we're really getting into the next topic quite a bit. Uh T I S P dot O R G. The minutes of what that group goes through each month or bi-monthly are, are published online. So you can, if you want the detail nitty-gritty, you can look at those minutes.
Thank you.
Yeah, but Larry's right, when uh something major comes along, I try to report out at the Board, the Board of Aldermen meeting, so.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Answer your question?
You did.
Very good. Uh, okay, let's move on. The presentation and discussion on the proposed North Topsail Beach Five-Year Action Plan and Thirty-Year Plan by Engineer Chris Gibson, TI Coastal. He is not here, so Larry's gonna be him for a short while here. I, I would like, uh, I would like for us to discuss what he went over at our last meeting. Uh I have reviewed it, and reviewed it, and reviewed it, and, and I am pretty much of the opinion that we are, we are to a point with what he has proposed, and have covered most of the bases that would be important to the board for us to, to be able, the Board of Aldermen, for, for us to be able to move this thing forward and, and get it sent to the Board of Aldermen for their review, understanding that, well, at the December meeting, I, I did an, just an abbreviated go-through with it, and, and, and I, I was pleased that there was a whole lot of heads shaking like this and not like this, which is a good thing, most of the time. And, and so I, I think that, that I, I don't see a lot of, there's a lot of little nitty-gritty things that are gonna have to be dealt with, but that doesn't have anything to do with the approval process of us deciding, or the Board of Aldermen deciding to go forward with this plan. And, and I think that what I'd like for us to do, if it's okay with you, is let, let's have a really brief go-through. Not a discussion, because I can't explain things, nor Mike, or anybody else, exactly the way that Chris does. But I want, I want us, before we, before we have a discussion to move it forward, or, or, or vote to move it forward, I'd like for us just to look at it real quickly and see that it meets the items that are gonna be, are, are, are gonna be important in the eyes of the Board of Aldermen to make it move forward. None of them are gonna be, are, are technical enough to do it all, nor are we. But we, we've got someone that is, and I think that it's time to move forward with it, so.
Just one, one thing, Larry and I talked about this a little bit, is I think that it would be a mistake for us to take something to the Board of Aldermen that is completely done, and we want your approval on it. By taking something like this, because it's gonna be an item of first impression to the Board of Aldermen, except for Mike and I, right, the scope of this and everything else. And Larry did a good job of that. But I hundred percent would agree with Larry, let's get the ball moving, right? We get it up there, Board of Aldermen looks at it, and then we hopefully get nodding heads, because we gotta, we gotta put the money aside for the permitting and everything else. And so then, the next time we're coming in, and also, I think, we want feedback from them, right? And so if the Board comes back and says, you know, tweak here or tweak there, for example, then, and, and Chris is gonna tweak it, make those changes, we take it back up, and then we can get the approvals.
Is Chris gonna present it to the Board of Aldermen?
We don't know yet, I mean, I, I hope so, but I don't know.
Well, my, my thoughts, and, and, and Mike and I talked about this a little bit. This, this is a monumental thing we're doing. And I'm, I'm thinking that maybe we need to send this forward for their review to look over. Uh they've had, they've had some, some conversation about it, because we've had conversations. But let them, let them, send this to them, so they've got it to review at their February meeting, and, or, and to discuss with amongst themselves. If they've got questions, make, make a note of those questions, and then if they need, if they need more feedback, then what we'll do is, is just like, ju- just like, just, just like Rick was saying, we can then have Chris tweak whatever it is, questions they have, to better answer those. And then, if necessary, and if they want to, then have Chris come in and make a full presentation to them if, 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 if that's the way that it progresses for, for approval. Because if we're gonna, if we're gonna meet some of the timeframes that we're looking at here in the proposals, we've got to move. And, and I think that, uh, and, and, and I, I don't know, I'm not on the Board of Aldermen, I, I sit there a lot of times and, and just make a little report, and then, you know, and I, I don't know what impression that has on anybody. Uh, since it makes me feel better, you know, so, but, but, but I think that, but I believe that, I believe that this is something that we need to get going, get, put the rubber meets the road.
One tweak, though, is I think, I think it would be a good idea to have Chris at the, at the Board.
Well, even-
Ju- even if he's just doing a quick presentation of this, because this stuff is, if you remember how he walked us through it, when he put up that last thing with the numbers on it, everybody went, and he's like, you have to understand how this is being paid for, all these things are done. So then, he can bring it back, we can tweak it, it comes back to us, and then when it goes back up. But I think to Larry's point, if we wait three or four months to take this up, that delays the permitting, that delays everything, so I think we've gotta keep moving.
Que- question to, to manage and Darian, do, do you think, do you think that, that we can, uh, do, do you think that we ought to still put this in their hands prior to, and then have Chris come, if possible, to make the presentation, or do you think they need to have it and wait for questions to come in? Which, I mean, you're, you're, you're where the rubber meets the road. What do you think?
My, my advice is to have it placed on the agenda for the Board, next February Board of Aldermen meeting, for them to have this, and it be on the agenda, so it gives everyone an opportunity, not only the Board, but residents, to see it, so that they can come to the meeting, and it, so they know it's gonna be discussed. They can come, they can ask any questions, the Board can ask any questions, it can keep mov- moving forward.
What you're saying, have Chris there, is what you're saying.
But Chris needs to present, it's too big of a, it's too big of an-
And that, that, that meeting date is, uh-
February.
February the, hold on.
Seven.
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 February the seventh? Okay. All right, thank you for that input. All right, real quickly, let's do this, and we're all, we're all in agreement, but let's just make sure that we're, we are covering everything that we, that we think needs to be covered. Uh, next slide, please. This, this says February, that's when that cover sheet was made, but everything else in here was as of December the fifth. So, uh, this, this is just the, in, in the presentation, this is, this is showing what the beach reaches, i.e. the, the different, uh, phases that we have in Topsail Island, Reach One through Reach Five, which is Phase One through Phase Five. Our goal, our goal is to be moving this to where it's one beach. Uh, we're, we're moving to get all five reaches to be engineered beaches, and, and once we do that, th- then it's all treated as one, and we won't have the reaches anymore. But anyway, that, that, that is what he's gonna be working with in their process, process. Next pha- next slide, please. Th- this is just breaking it down into, into phase, the Phase One and Two, and, and it's talking about how many yards they need. It's in, pretty much in detail, he's, he's saying how much, how much sand that we think we're gonna need there, so volume, the volume is included in, in all of our phases, so what we're presenting to them is also showing what volume of sand that we think is gonna be placed. And, and like in Phase One, they're talking about five hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred cubic yards, and it's a nine thousand foot length. Phase Two's a ten thousand one hundred and twenty-foot length, and it's nine hundred, using nine hundred and forty thousand seven hundred cubic yards of sand. So they've done this, and so the next, the next few slides, bring it on for the next slide. Uh, the next slide is, is, is dealing with, uh, with Phases Three, Four, and Five, and, and, and that same process, and showing how much is gonna be there. So this is showing the Board, this is showing the Board, all, all the sand that we're projecting that's gonna need to be utilized in all of our reaches, i.e. phases, to, to make this thing become what we want it to be. The next, next slide, please. Uh, this, the borrow area, DA one forty-three, there's a, that's an area that's out in, in, on, in the river, uh, that's out there at the intersections, and, and it is, it's approximately, has approximately one point nine million cubic yards of, of sand in it. It's, it's, they're saying it's relatively easy to permit, it's less expensive to use than offshore borrow, so instead of having to pump from offshore, we'd be pumping from there. It's sufficient for reaches one, two, and three. So that, that section of our beaches is the, is the section that has had the most problems because of the inlet, and because of the water, yeah.
Remind him that reaches are phases.
Well, I did, but just remember, when I say reaches, now, he's co-
I'm sure you used to call them phases.
He's calling them reaches, but if I say Reach One, it's Phase One. So, so that, that's, so they're, they're, uh, and, and that, that will be eligible for shallow draft funding, so we can, we can, and this is something that the engineers are already telling us, so then we can go, we, we can go and, and, and make applications for, 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 for loans and, and, and matching funds. And, but there is a five-million-dollar USAC study on six borrow areas that's gonna rehab, which includes this DA one forty-three, so there's already five million dollars being spent to research this, which is gonna reduce the amount of, of money and time that it's gonna take for us to be able to do that. Does that make sense? So, a- and then the next slide, please. Uh, thi- this is a, this is a temporary, that's an important word, temporary terminal growing as a construction item. This is a, this is an example from the Masonboro inlet. You hear everybody talking about jetties and, and, and growings and all these kind of things, and, and that's, that's not what we're proposing at this point in time. Uh, what we're proposing is a temporary terminal growing, and it is something that can, what makes it temporary is it's something that can be removed. So we, we, we're proposing to possibly put in a metal structure that would, that would, that would cause some of that water not to be washed in on Phases One, Two, and, and not send all our sand down to the south end. And, and that's something that we're, that we're moving forward. So this is something else that we're showing the Board that, that's, we're gonna be looking at, yes.
And, and keep in mind on this one, and Chris made a very good point, is that the permitting is completely different on this than the other project. The one that the Army Corps is working on and doing a study is years and years and years to get permits and studies. He believes this is a much quicker way, because it's a temporary structure, okay, that you can get it done much quicker, and a lot less expensive, too, so.
The, and, and, and I'll get to this point in a minute, but the bottom line is, what, what Rick is talking about, there's the potential for a temporary terminal structure in fiscal year twenty-six. So that's, uh,
Way in advance of the growing.
That's way, way in, in back, in, in advance of the other, yes. Uh, okay, next slide, please. Uh, this is the design schedule. The standalone permit for reaches one, two, and three because of DA one forty-three, they talk about, uh, this, this being researched from no, from December of twenty-three to, to November of twenty-four. So there, he's, he's basically saying that he thinks that he could have a permit possibly by the end of twenty-four, is what we're saying there. And then, then the long, long-term sand source development, uh, be January of twenty-four through December of twenty-four. And then the finalization of the, of the thirty-year plan, including the permit, and this is, this is not that the plans, the thirty-year plan's gonna be finished, but the, but the finalization of the permitting and of the things that we will have to do and all, he's saying that he should be able to have by the end of two thousand twenty-five.
Right, meaning the permits are in place.
That's right. Permits are in place. Any, any questions on that team? All right, next, next slide, please. Uh, the initial construction schedule. See, this is another thing that the Board's gonna want to know. When, when's all this gonna happen? Same questions we ask. And, and the good thing is that the questions, we did ask these questions. And the things that we've asked is what now has been answered, and so if we've covered all the questions that should have been asked, then we should have a plan. So, so, uh, in, in the winners, winners of FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five, complete the phases of, of Phases Five and Four. Winner of fa- fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, complete the phases of one, two, and three, and the maintenance on Phase One. So by the end of twenty-six, uh, we, we should have all that done. Potential for temporary terminal structure, FY twenty-six. Initial inlet improvement, maintenance for one, two, and three, and FY twenty-nine. Cycle every four years with the small hopper maintenance annually. Initial hopper maintenance FY thirty-two. And then cycle every ten years after that. So, uh, then, go, the next slide, please, Dan.
Ju- just to clarify, when he says hopper maintenance, that's a hopper dredge that would keep the new river inlet clear, and then that sand would be pumped onto the, the reaches one through three.
See, I, I knew that, but I wanted him to have the opportunity to say so. No.
Sure.
Well, no, 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 no.
Sure, Larry.
My, my mind's working so fast, I went right on past. A- anyway, the, uh, the, the, so, so the, the funding opportunities, there's the shallow draft fund, three-to-one state match, uh, maintenance and borrow from the NRI, shallow draft inlet fund, three-to-one state match, uh, beach resilience fund, AKA Phase Four, state one-to-one match, directly legislated state grants. The, these are, these are all the places that we're looking to go for money. FEMA assistance after declared disasters. That's the reason we're trying to get all of the beaches engineered. Because right now, Phase Five is the only beach that we, the only phase that we have that qualifies for FEMA funds. And, and our whole purpose of creating, our whole purpose of creating this plan is so that all the, Phase Four will become an, an, an engineered beach when we finish getting Phase Four done. So, so our plan is to have all five of our phases become the beach for Topsail, Topsail, North Topsail Beach, and, and it all be engineered so that our entire beach then would qualify for FEMA funds, which is very, very, very important, and, and, and save us a lot, a lot of, lot of money.
Can I, can I just add something in there? I think that Chris brought it up. One of the things that people get confused about is, for example, the Army Corps project that we were, we were in before, and FEMA, alright, and Fran talked about this, one of our beach engineers at the last meeting. Under the Army Corps project, the town has to contribute every time that money is spent, anywhere from twenty-five percent up, meaning that when you've got a six-year renourishment plan under that, you have to, and they've already, we've already been told by the LGC, which is the, the state group that, that manages, or I should say, um, what's the right word, has to approve funding? You have to spend, so every six years, we would have to put money up, alright, the town, and it's millions and millions of dollars. Once it becomes an engineered beach, then it's FEMA money one hundred percent, no contribution by the town. So once that becomes an engineered beach, that part of the beach, and I'm talking about the sand, not just the dune, once it's engineered, sand losses from storms in those areas are covered a hundred percent by FEMA, versus if we had to do the, the Army Corps, we would have to make a contribution every time. So he called about it, you're using federal money a hundred percent versus having the town having to put in. One of the reasons that we didn't do the Army Corps project is the cost to the town would have been over ten million dollars a year forever. With a town that has ten million dollars in total revenue, those economics don't work very well. But the whole idea is, if, once we turn all of our town reaches into engineered beaches, like Five and Four is right now, any damage done through storms and stuff like that becomes a hundred percent reimbursable by the federal government, not a contribution by the town. And that's the business model that he wants to do. It's, it's, you know, it's the other, using other people's money, but it's having the federal funds come in without us having to make a contribution. And that's a key part of our plan. It's also why Chris talked about before is, why do we keep putting money in and maintaining the beach? Because we do an annual survey that says, this is how much. So a storm comes through, we're here, that's what they replace. So every, you know, we look at this, and he's got it set up, so we're always doing some maintenance, because you always wanna maintain the, the top level of sand, knowing that they'll replace whatever was there at the time of the storm. And so that's why you keep putting money in. But the town resources, we've seen, and the beach fund will take care of the, at annual maintenance once we get the town beat, without having to raise taxes or do anything else. So that's an important part of it.
Yeah, and that's, that's why, that's why it's so important that we spend all this money now, so that we can prolong the life of our, our beaches in perpetuity is what our hope is when we do this. Otherwise, otherwise, we're gonna be hunting for money- Otherwise, uh, otherwise, we're gonna be hunting for money, big money, uh, every time there's a storm. So, uh, thank, that's a good, good explanation, thank you. Uh, but, and, and then, then there's, you know, other, other county and state and federal opportunities that's yet to be identified, that come along, that we can apply for. Uh, basically, what, what he's saying here with his plan is that we, that we'll, we'll have enough funding opportunities identified to carry a long-term plan without changing tax rate. So we, we won't have to turn around and, and, and we, we won't have to create a new tax for the purpose of, of doing this. We have to create a new tax, but it's not gonna be for the purpose of this, if, if we can, if this all works out the way that it's supposed to be. Does that make sense? And.
We're gonna spend within our means.
That's right, that's right, that's, you know, and, and so it's a, it's a, i- it's, it's an important, important factor. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, that, we're not gonna go over this.
That's a scary one.
Yeah, th- this, this, if you, if you, if, if you look it all over and, and, and try to.
Cause the total.
You know, you'll, you'll, your eyes will sort of join together after a while, but the, the bottom line is, what we're, what we're projected expenditures here over the next thirty years, between, between twenty-four and fifty-four, uh, we expect a projected expenses of two hundred and ser- two hundred and sixty-three million, seven hundred dollars.
Eek. But I, I think the, the key on this one, Larry, is if you look under the FDA loan we just talked about, that's the Phase Five loan.
Yep.
For the two thousand fifteen. When we restructured that loan and knocked it down, once that, it's gone, if you look at the money that we'll be able to bring in, um, you know, in terms of beach money, all of a sudden, your, your net number's going up two million dollars a year when that's clear, and that's why you build that into, so that we have that money going forward. It's not committed to an old loan.
And, and there was.
And that thing was, was refinanced at three percent, two something? Two point something percent.
A- and, and, and somewhere, I don't know if I missed this somewhere, but so- somewhere in here, it basically is identifying that, uh, we're, we're, we're what, two years away of paying off our, is it two years or three years that we're, four years?
You just paid the one payment, I think, so you've got.
Yeah, we're four years, we're four years away from paying off our, our last big loan with that, and once that happens, then, then we'll have how many million, two million? Three million?
Two million more a year.
Two million more dollars a year, that's already, that's, that's already.
In the pot.
In, in the pot, that'll be coming in to, to maintain all this, to do, do this stuff with. So we're, there's been a lot of, lot of time, effort, energy, and, and work going into getting all this stuff put together, and, and, and Chris has done a great job with, with this, with this committee, cause we've spent a lot of time meeting, we had many, 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 many meetings in discussing these things, and then Chris would go back and come back with something else, and, and, and when you're doing it a month at a time, it, it takes it longer to get it all put together, but i- it's, uh, a- as this committee can tell you, we've, there's been a lot of, lot of hours spent with this. This is all we've dealt with for the past, uh, two years. Uh, so, and, and so basically, and then, then when you go to the next slide, please. All right, this, this is the non-construction proposed expenses, uh, over FY twenty-four and twenty-five. Uh, for surveys and, and geotechnical analysis of the DA one forty-three, he's projecting four hundred thousand dollars. Engineering, design of the borrow area, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Environmental analysis, seventy-five thousand dollars, and permitting and grant applications, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, so what we're proposing is seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that's gonna be spent over the next two years, just to get ready to go.
Get permits in place.
That's right, we get all the permits in place, and all the, the testing done and everything, so that we're, we're in place and ready to go. So, based on that, as I reviewed this again last night, and went over what it is that, that we ever decided that we wanted to know, that we knew that the Board would want to know, uh, it appeared to me that we had that information in hand. And, a- and I, I sort of knew that whenever Chris and I were last talking, and, and when he was talking about what he was gonna talk about today, and I'm thinking to myself, well, that means he's finished. I mean, basically, uh, without, without having more input and more questions, and, and this, this committee has, has feel, feel confident that he has, has done what we've asked him to do, and, and gotten this thing to the point to where.
Next stage.
To where I think it needs to move on to the next phase, cause we, we could sit and meet over and over and over again. So I, I would like to have someone make a motion, uh, to, to move this thing forward to the Board, with, with the parameters that, uh, Manager Darian put into it about Chris being, you know, Chris being at the Board, and they get this thing to be able to review, and Chris be there to answer questions and make presentation or whatever they want to have happen. And, and if they have questions prior to that, then we'll be happy to answer those for them and see what happens. But I, I s- I, I know I gotta have a motion for that, and we do have a quorum, by the way, even though we've got those two missing people, we do have a quorum, correct?
Yep.
So.
I'll make the motion to move this presentation and discussion up to the Board of Alderman, and having, um, Chris Gibson from TICOS will present, or answer any questions to the Board.
Uh, start again.
You turned me off.
Turned you on.
No, I wasn't.
She was on. He's calling.
Sorry. Death.
What?
I second the motion, and this is not a part of all of the motion, but I recommend that as many committee members.
Take your microphone.
I'm sorry. I'd like to recommend that as many of the.
Second the motion again, start again.
Second motion.
Oh, second motion.
They, they didn't hear it on the.
This is being recorded, too, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
That's why it's a red light.
That's what we gotta rely on.
That's cause Nancy's not here.
Entertainment. Um, I th- I think as many BISAC committee members as possible should go to this meeting.
That's fine.
So that's, I mean, that's just a comment.
Yeah, and just one other comment before we vote on this, is, Mike, I think one of the things that we th- we should think about is, at the February meeting, one of the things that we're gonna need to do is allocate some money this year, which I think we have in the budget, to start the permitting process, all right? So that we can start, what I don't wanna do is wait three months to start the permitting process. If, if we can get the Board's consensus to start allocating money to start some of this stuff, before we finalize a plan, cause I, I can't imagine, we're, I thought we talked about.
Excuse me just a minute. All right, we've got a, we've got a motion and a second. Uh, do, do I, do, do I hear, I mean, does everyone?
Agree.
It's a consensus.
Agree, I mean, confirm, okay?
Then is there any further discussion?
That's what I was doing. I was doing, that, perfect. But my whole point, too, is I think that, well, we can talk to Chris in the meantime, but I thought, Larry, he was only asking for between now and June, the end of June, wasn't he talking a couple hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
That's what he was talking about. I don't want to delay three months starting a two hundred thousand dollar permitting process. So I think it's something, Mike, that we ought to give some thought to, as to how, that Chris comes in loaded on that one, and that we would make a decision, at least on some of the permitting stuff. We're not gonna make a decision on three hundred million dollars, but we can sure make a decision on starting the permitting process, and, and that's what I'd be pushing for.
All right, can I ask?
Right, and. So, so, uh, two comments here. Uh, my understanding of where we are with our Fund Thirty beach budget is, there is still about a million dollars that's uncommitted, uh, that we would use for the Vitax grant, possibly for, uh, the coastal storm dami- damage mitigation, when we talked about to repair dune damage in the hotspots, but.
This year.
This year, but the beauty of moving forward in this way is we can get through the permitting process and find out if it's gonna work before we actually are ready to start the project, when we have the money, after we paid off the, uh, spatial obligation.
Exactly.
That's the beauty of starting with the permitting now, and we have the funds to do that now, so.
Exactly.
It's a no-win situation.
Win-win.
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 No, but, but I think, I think the key is, I think the consensus of us, and what you just said, Larry, very simply is, getting the permits in place is the best start that we can do in any of this kind of stuff. Getting those in place and knowing that we can be opportunistic, or spend the money or whatever, but without those.
We can't do anything.
We're not doing four, we're not doing anything else, so I think that's, that's critical, and I, I, I just can't imagine that the Board of Alderman's not gonna wanna go forward with that, so we'll, we'll see.
Any, uh, or is there any, any other questions or comments? Okay, we've got the motion, and it's been seconded, and discussion's been had, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay, we are, uh, we're now back to the public comments. So, the, does anyone have any comments or questions, or anything that the committee can answer for you, or anything you'd like to say?
I thought it was very informative.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. It's not always this way. It's always interesting, though.
That's true.
Okay, well, listen, we thank y'all for coming, if there's no, is there, is it, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
Next meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I do have, I do have another. Uh, our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February the twentieth, at ten-thirty, I've got tentative leave over there, but it's not tentative now, cause we voted on it, and so it's now official. Okay, having said that, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?